City Council order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated.
Item number two is the aim of case for that, City Councilman Patrick Farr.
Will you please pray with me? Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this opportunity to serve the public, and Father, we ask your blessing on this meeting tonight. We ask that our decisions and our actions be guided by your will and your will alone. Father, please be with those who are suffering through this pandemic, comfort them in pain and suffering, and also be with those who are suffering through tumultuous times in our politics. Please, Father, be with our country, be with every individual in it, so that we see clearly your will and that your will be done. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Patrick. Item number three is honor participation, that is covered on the screen. If there's any item you would like to speak about, please see the city manager or city secretary, so you will gladly sign up. Item number four is a consent agenda. Action A, A is action regarding minutes of July 21st. B, action regarding approval of revised official zoning map. C, action regarding acceptance of water sewer facility easement from Arden Mills. D, action regarding approval of audit engagement letter with Weaver and Tidwell. That is a consent agenda. Any questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second. All those in favor raise your right hand. With the record effect, we have a quorum, we have a full house tonight. Appreciate y'all being here. All right, item number five, citizens in action regarding development agreement with Havner LP related to public infrastructure on Old Decatur Road adjacent to Block A, Van Zandt. For that, Public Works Director Rick Strick.
Yes, Sir Mayor and Council, this agreement is a agreement for roadway improvements with the Havner HH group. You recall that we approved the used storage facility off of Old Decatur and Bailey-Boswell. There are three additional lots that came apart or came as a part of that development in a replant of that property. So what this agreement does is recover based on proportionality a total of $220,000. That will be divided by the four lots as far as the cost, and that will be deposited to the city in escrow, permanent escrow, at the time of building permit. Just to give you a kind of an update or snapshot on where we are on Old Decatur funds. In escrow currently today, we have six hundred, a little over $681,000. You recall the square also had a proportionate share of Old Decatur, and when they plat lots two through, two and three, that becomes due and payable, about $550,000. And with this $220,000, we have almost one and a half million dollars in escrow to be applied toward the project. The latest estimate, as you know, also, Old Decatur is under design by Kimley Horn. That current cost estimate for that project is $1,815,000, that's with a 20% contingency. So we've got a delta of about $360,000 to fund that project fully, not including engineering. So engineering will be in addition to that. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those, but staff recommends approval.
Counsel, questions? Mr. Farr?
I just have a question on the three lots that are being developed outside of the storage facility. Is there any discussion about what those will be? And I'm not talking about who's buying it, just, just what is the, what's the general use for those four, those three lots?
I'll tell you, one, one is being considered by another, a fast food operation. The other two, they've, they've talked about a car wash. We've discouraged that, but really they're, they're, there's no commitments at this time for those three lots.
The only concern that I have with the traffic study is that, for example, if it's a car wash or an automated car wash, similar to what we see on the Boulevard, I just, I would like to know that our traffic study considers a use of that, that heavy type traffic, because a storage facility doesn't generate any traffic at all.
Yeah, that's the dilemma with doing the traffic study, and they did a traffic study. I mean, you have to make some assumptions based on the zoning of what that use would be, the intensity of that use. So those assumptions were made, and of course, Kimley Horn reviewed the study and also then performed proportionality. So I guess you could have a more intense use, but, you know, I guess in the judgment of Kimley Horn, either way, in any case, you know, the assumptions were valid.
If it weren't a car wash, wouldn't there be required for an SUP for that as well? So we would have another crack at that?
I don't know. I don't know in that area. I know that on the Boulevard, that might be the case. In fact, it's a restricted.
There are additional requirements, but I believe SUP would be by right in community commercial.
Mr. Mayor, we, we had a zoning ordinance amendment recently that I believe required SUP for all car washes, except in light industrial.
It is correct. That would be an SUP.
So the, that's been addressed, and we, we made the applicant aware of that as well.
Yep.
Like Rick mentioned, the last, the last that we heard, they didn't, they have one commitment or an LOI from the fast food operator, but the other two lots, no commitments at this time. We'll mention that Keith and I have talked with Aaron Farmer, with the retail coach, about those remaining lots for, you know, future potential.
Sure. Thanks for the clarification. Just, I just see this as kind of our last opportunity to, to gauge what kind of traffic load we're putting on that northbound side specifically. And I know those two lanes, for what we're intending to use, it seemed to be adequate, and it's not, I don't see a problem with it. I just wasn't sure about those lots, and if we've got an SUP for a, for a car wash that's required, then that's our crack. That's what I wanted to know.
Actually, as a result of, of the traffic study and also the design that Kimley Horn is doing, they're expanding a portion of Old Decatur to four lanes. So, so they've, they've taken that into account. I think, you know, based on the square's traffic impact study and also this, this development, I mean, that, that will operate at a level service D, or, you know, maybe even worse in some of those intersections. So it will be a congested area at some point in the future, like most of our archerials, so.
So is it four lanes with a turn lane?
Four lanes, but then they would also be an additional turn lane.
Okay.
In some areas, in some areas.
It's the best we can do, I think. I just don't.
You'd only have so much right away and.
Sure. Thank you.
And I would just add on that I've got the TIA up. They did consider restaurants as, as a worst-case scenario for all three lots.
Okay.
So restaurants being different types of restaurants, sit-down maybe? Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like they've got two as fast food and one as a restaurant, as their worst-case scenario.
I see, okay. All right, Counsel, other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I guess, Mayor, I make a motion to consider the development agreement with Havener, public infrastructure installation to Old Decatur, rather than Jackson.
I'll second.
Patrick second. Any questions? All those in favor raise your right hand. Those opposed? Excellent. Thank you, Rick. Item number six, consideration action regarding ordinance 2020-14, suspending any payment due for application of mobile food truck unit for a period of six months. For that, City Manager Gabe Bray.
Mayor and Counsel, as, as you're aware, our farmer's market and food truck area's been in action over the past couple of months. We couldn't have planned for a pandemic, of course, and have certainly been impacted by that. We have one food truck that's currently licensed under our ordinance governing food trucks, that's Donut Snob. For whatever reason, I don't know what, we haven't got interest from other, many other food trucks to attend the, the event eventually, specifically the farmer's market event. So this ordinance tonight, for your consideration, is to recommend a deferral of payment for six months for the food truck permit fee, which is $250 annually, in the hope that we get more applicants, generate some excitement, they're successful, and we go get more food trucks. So it's one of those things, I think if you, if you, the Field of Dreams approach, you know, if you build it, they will come, well, we need the food trucks to come, and that's the intent of this ordinance. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yes, Valerie.
I did talk to Gabe earlier, and I have that kind of a scenario maybe we should think about besides delaying it. The reason I say that is because if we start off in arrears with something, it's hard for somebody to catch up to it. And so if we start off without having or postponing it for six months, in six months, they're going to have to pay the $250 and they may just leave, and even though we have a contract with them, we would have to collect the money somehow. So I'm just curious if we could do something different, like, the permits now are $250 a year, which comes up to about $20.83 a month. What would happen, or why could we not do a permit for $25 a month? That would be $300 a year if they wanted to do a monthly permit. If they wanted to go with the year, say they paid for the first six months at $25 a month, that's $150, then they would just have to come up with the other 100, and they'd have two months free, basically, if you did it that way. And if they paid the money before, because a food truck, there's no reason why they couldn't make $25 a month to cover their fees, whereas it might be harder for them to come up with the $250 all at once. But if you get them started off late, six months, that would make it harder on them to come up with it six months later, and they could walk out old and it's nothing. At least if they did it by the month, we'd have that monthly fee. And so I just thought maybe that might be a different way, instead of postponing the payment, to just charge them, do it like a monthly thing, $25 a month. That's more than what the yearly thing is, and if they want to leave in six months, we still made $150 and we haven't lost any money.
Are we, we're not postponing the fee, we're waiving the fee for six months, right? How would it work out, Gabe? Make sure I'm clear on that.
So just proposing that we don't collect, for, for new applicants, don't collect a fee for six months. So after six months and one day, they would need to pay the, the permit. Or we would not, you know, we'd revoke the permit. So, and again, the, the intent is to encourage more participation. I think that once we get more food trucks and they become regular and they establish a, you know, a routine clientele, it's going to take off, at least that's a hope.
But I did talk to Gabe, and he said like the month is, is unlimited, so for $25 unlimited that they could come up, that's nothing.
That's, yeah, and that's another point. So the $250 fee is annually from the day of the application. You know, if, if a food truck wanted to come tomorrow on a Wednesday, they could. I think that most of the food trucks want to be with the farmer's market, because they know there's kind of a critical mass and there'll be X amount of people with the farmer's market, but that's good at any time, so long as it's scheduled and we have space. So I think, put Rick on the spot, do we have 10 spaces? Is it 10 food truck spaces, hookups?
Six.
Six, okay. So we could handle up to, you know, six a day at any time.
Actually, you could, you have six spots that are set up for water and electricity. Feasibly, you could put some more out there, they just wouldn't have water and electricity available.
Good point.
Mayor?
Yes, Senator.
I thought we were limiting food trucks to three trucks at a time. I thought that's what our ordinance said, not six.
We've had zero so far, so, haven't had to worry about that quite yet, but what does our ordinance say?
And we don't charge them any other fees to come in and participate, other than the permit?
Only the permit if they use city utilities, which is electricity and water, then we have a day rate, which is $25 a hookup. The one time that Donut Snob happened to come out, they had their own, they were self-contained, so they didn't use our electricity or water, so.
The other fee they have to pay, they do have to have a county permit, right?
Yeah, so the, our city permit requires two things, two main things. One, they have a valid health permit through Tarrant County, and two, that they have sufficient general liability insurance. Pretty standard.
So, you know, I understand that these food trucks may be struggling, but, you know, our cities are struggling as well, and I agree with Valerie 1,000%. I don't think we need to be giving our stuff away. I like her idea, I think it's reasonable, it breaks it up into smaller amounts that I think people can afford.
Yeah, just do a monthly, monthly fee a year.
Counsel, other questions or comments?
How would we collect that?
Up front? They would have to fill out a permit through the city anyway, so.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, if we, if we are collecting at $25 a month, would we expect them to pay us $25 upfront and then come back the next month and pay another 25, another 25? Okay.
That's what I would do. I don't know that I would let them get in arrears, because they could just drop off and not ever come back.
I'm just, is there a way we can incentivize the trucks beyond waiving the fee? I mean, so in my mind, the, the most successful food truck parks that exist are adjacent to venues, not just parks. And what I mean by a venue, it's a live outdoor stage, it's a beer garden, it's a something that a lot of people go to. And a lot of people go to our parks, but not a lot of people that are, you know, on a three-mile run are going to stop off and have a hoagie in the middle of the three-mile run. I would not be one of them.
Right.
And the folks that are down there at the tennis courts playing tennis also, if they're truly playing tennis, they're probably not going to go over there and have a gyro. So, you know, snow cones, those sorts of things that are refreshing for a, a very active park environment, I can see those kinds of trucks being somewhat successful, but they have very low ticket values, very low profitability. I think that there has to be something that we need to do as a city, like sponsoring concerts in the park, which we can't do right now, and putting it right there next to the food trucks and creating a venue, an environment that draws people who want to sit on their butts, not run the park. So thinking about those kinds of things, I think is the right way to attract the food truck vendors, rather than even waiving fees. I think, I would be willing to pay $250 a year for a food truck fee, knowing that I'm going to have eight to $12 ticket turns per sale for people who are wanting to buy things like hoagies and tacos and nachos and so on and so forth, the things that have higher ticket sales. So I, I, I like the approach, I like the idea that we're wanting to incentivize, but I think we have to create a market. We've not created the market. We've, we have created the opportunity for a market, but we've not really created that market.
Have you checked what other cities are doing? Along Patrick's question?
Yeah, when we put together our, our food truck ordinance, our annual fee was in line with what was expected. I think it's just getting the initial interest stirred up. You know, the, the critical mass is there for the farmer's market, it's not there yet during the week. So how we, you know, get the walk-ups going, I don't know, that's the intent, so.
Can we do, we can't do concerts in the park if we do the mass like we do the farmer's market?
The concerts in the park, I think, were canceled this entire year, is that correct?
They're, they're canceled until further notice as far as gatherings. And kind of in, in answer to Patrick's, sorry, there, in answer to what you were saying, that, that's it, that was our intent. It was eventually moving the, the concerts in the park down there. It's a great location, you know, when we had our concerts down here at the large pavilion, we, we had a few food trucks attend, but that was our intent, was to have events. Right now, the only events we've been able to offer are just the, the farmer's market. You know, concerts going down there, having different, you know, even movie nights type of thing, gatherings like that is, is something we definitely want to do. Right, the, the fear that the, the food truck places are having right now is just the, it's not necessarily the gatherings that, that we're, we're new, and it's, and it's an unknown.
Sure.
But absolutely, you know, right now, they can come any day they want, once they, once they're signed on and have their permit, but the permits are the, farmer's market is, is our attraction as of right now.
We, the last farmer's market, Community Link had two food vendors. One was Red's Barbecue and another was a lemonade stand. My understanding was Red's sold out, they didn't have a food truck, they just had a tent, they were, they paid the vendor fee to be there, and I think the lemonade stand did well, so.
They were busy the whole time, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were.
And then, like I say, we have one that's already paid the permit and is registered for the year, and then two others that have submitted an application, Kona Ice and Crown Catering. I'm not familiar with Crown Catering, what type of food they have, but.
So have they started playing baseball again?
That I don't know.
The.
Down here at the park?
The youth, or, sorry, the adult softball leagues are going to start up, I believe it's next week.
So if they could do that, can we not start our concerts in the park back?
So the mayor has authority to approve gatherings, outdoor gatherings of greater than 10.
Well, Todd?
Would there, see, we've, we signed an agreement for concerts in the park, right? Is that agreement still?
We have, and we've followed along with all of the, there's a number of cities that participate in the same concert series that we do, they just have the same thing in their town, and every single one of them have been postponed and or canceled.
Okay.
But we could be a leader. We could be a leader and take it off.
Leader the right word? I don't know. I would be concerned, I don't know, we'd have to talk about it. If we wanted, we could investigate doing a concert in the park. I don't know, would people come out? That's a big question. If we had it.
Well, they do for the farmer's market.
They do, briefly, you know, to come and stay for that, that's not a long-term thing. I don't know if people would come for a concert. I'm not sure.
And most of them have really followed the rules that you put forth, with the face mask in there, oh, they were, the two that I went to, they were, so.
Just one other thing I forgot to mention, in light of the current restrictions, every, every gathering, it doesn't matter whether it's a, a city event or otherwise, requires approval from Tarrant County, if it's over, from the mayor through Tarrant County, over 10. So, you know, we couldn't have predicted when we were opening our farmer's market food truck. I think that might be some of the hiccup, that the food trucks need approval from the mayor, which we can, we can do, especially with the farmer's market. But any special event where over 10 are involved, so.
So I, I think we can't put this pressure on Todd, period. So this is not going to be where we say it was Todd's decision to put all these people out there. This, that has to be a unanimous decision by this council. It is a serious decision.
It is.
It's putting people in a position to be in close contact with very limited, what I would call enforceability. We can't just say, hey, Todd, it's up to you, man. That's not fair. I think that has to be a unanimous decision from this council. But that's, that's my sentiment, and we should discuss that.
We should discuss that then.
Yeah, and that's really outside the scope of this, this act of.
Understood. I just felt you getting a lot of pressure there, Todd, and that's not fair.
Absolutely fair. And, and to be fair with the, the farmer's market, one thing we took into consideration was, it is outdoors. We know the data today says outdoors are safer than indoors. How much can be argued, but that, so we could certainly investigate the, the concert in the park, let's, in the future, let's, let's see.
Let's do it, let's chalk it up.
Probably too hot right now anyhow, but we can, we can talk about early, early this fall kicking it off.
Yeah.
So back to the food truck park. I did have a request for audience participation, I did not want to leave them out. Fred and Kelly Stewart, would you all like to come, come forward?
You all may answer some of my questions. I just feel like since, I know you said whoever came had their own generator, but you're not guaranteed that. In your paperwork, it says that the amenities are electricity, the bathrooms, trash service, and placement on the website for nothing? I can't, I mean, I like the $25 one, but the things that are going to hook up, we pick up all the trash and do all this, and they don't owe us a dime? I have a hard time with that. And are we, during this downtime, are we paying Community Link? Because I know that was part of the deal. So they're getting paid even though no trucks are coming?
That's, that's correct. So we have a contractual relationship with Community Link to be the operator of the farmer's market?
We're already in the hole.
Well, they're for the farmer's market, they're not for the food trucks.
They're not with the food trucks, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's two different, they're right there, but it's two different things.
Yeah.
But y'all are telling me that they're sometimes there at the same time?
They are, they would want to be. The food trucks would want to be there.
Yeah.
Well, you would hope they would want to be there.
Okay. But here again, to come up and not have to pay anything for us to pick up their trash and pay their electricity and pay the people that are supposed to be there, I, just as a citizen, I have a problem with that. About all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Mayor, yes?
I think the, you know, this farmer's market and food truck park is a great idea, and even if this pandemic had never happened, I think we would have had a difficult time attracting farmers, you know, and food trucks, because most of them already have their places that they go, that they know they can make money and, you know, they feel comfortable going there. So to get them to move is difficult, I think. I think this is something that will gain traction as time goes on and once the pandemic is over, and I just don't think we should expect much right now. You know, we're getting our feet in the water and getting our feet wet and doing the best we can under the circumstances, and I think it's quite popular under the circumstances. There's been many, many posts on the Facebook page, the city Facebook page even, that says, oh, such and such food truck, you know, they have many suggestions of food trucks that they would love to see come to that location. So I think at some point, like I said, it was not going to be that easy to attract them under normal circumstances. But with the pandemic, of course, it's even more difficult, so I think we should just not expect too much, and anything we can do to incentivize anyone to come, I think is a good idea, whichever one would work best. You know, I don't care which method we use, and I don't think we really know which one would work best, but as far as the concerts, I don't even know that we could get these acts to come under the circumstances. Probably not, and I'm personally not in favor of doing that right at this time because of the pandemic. So I just think we need to not expect too much and just realize that this is a, this will be, you know, a long, a somewhat slow process to get up and running to our expectations.
Thank you, Mary.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could just put Brent on the spot, could we do a prorated, just a, a month-to-month fee within the existing, pending council approval?
Certainly.
Because that may be doable. We just issue a month permit instead of a year permit and say, you know, 30 days later, do you want to keep going or whatever?
Right. We could certainly amend the ordinance to provide for an alternate permitting process that was merely on a month-to-month basis with its own fee, separate, separate process altogether.
Yeah, okay. Senator, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to comment again, I still think that we could give the $25, the month-to-month thing a try. If that doesn't work, you know, we could always come back and revisit, but I'm just not in favor, especially in these difficult times, not just for food trucks, but I mean for everybody, including the city. Our citizens are doing everything they can, and their taxes are higher just because of the appraisal rates. I think we need to do what we can to try to help them out as well, not just people who don't live in Saginaw coming in to make a living. You know, and, and I feel for them, I mean, we're small business owners ourselves, and we're struggling, we're rebranding, we're trying to remarket everything that we do, making lots and lots and lots of changes. And, and that's what you have to do when you're in business for yourself, and I know these people are probably doing the same. I think that telling them $25 a month is probably far more doable.
Sure. And, and just one point, we had, our day rate for the use of our utilities is, is $25 a day, that wouldn't change. So, you know, if somebody used electric, water, those services, I wouldn't recommend changing that, because we incur costs.
So those services would be rolled into that $25 penalty?
No, no. So if somebody wanted a, a permit for a.
So if somebody wanted a, a permit for, you know, the month of September, they'd pay us $25. If they showed up on a Saturday and they wanted to use our electric and, and water, we'd charge another $25.
How do we monitor that?
The day rate.
What fees does a food truck owner pay to operate at the truck yard? Steven, I pulled it up today.
Okay, it's in our fee schedule, the $25 a day. Yeah, we, we have a separate day rate to use our utilities, which are under lock and key, the actual pedestals, so somebody couldn't pull up without paying that fee, and that was by design. But I'm happy to correct that or make it more clear on the website.
You know, we're discussing this, we've had one food truck show up, so that's, that's our big concern, how can we get more? We can talk about making a little money here and there, but we have had zero interest in this, and we're trying to incentivize them to come out. So saying that we're not making money is not fair, because we're not making money because nobody's showing up. So how do we get people to show up? Will we incentivize? So what's what we're trying to do? And if we want to break it down to put off the fee, or if we want to break it down to do $25 a month, that's fine, if we think that will get people to show up. Because nobody showed up so far. We've had one, you know, one donut truck show up for one day.
Correct.
So that's been it. So that's our concern. That's what we're trying to do.
I have a question. What if we like, not this next farmer's market, because that's too simple, but the next one, call five or six food trucks, ask them to invite them to come one day with us, one day on the farmer's market, and let's see how it goes? And then, if they like it, then they could pay the permanent fee.
We've contacted over 20 in the past, probably five to six days, and letting them know about the, the eighth, which is what this Saturday, the, the farmer's market, so we've, we've actually done that and are currently doing that. Kind of in ref, in reference to the, the zero fee, what that's referring to is most food truck parks, established food trucks parks, charge a percentage of, of revenues that they make that night, and, and they state that on their website, how much it costs to be there. There are a few that do charge, like, a set rate of whatever, but most of them are charged a percentage. We currently don't, don't have that set up in our, we're chart, yes, there is a $250 or $25 permit fee, but to actually be there, we're not charging right now. But that's why it does say zero.
Percentage base, though, requires an audit. So you would have to secure their sales tickets and conduct an audit. So, you know, not to belabor this, I'll just tell you that food trucks, outside of cost of goods sold, so they, they operate between $30 and $55 an hour. So when you take cost to operate between $30 and $55 an hour, plus cost of goods sold, meaning the products that they buy to pedal, right? And you look in terms of what they might flip profitability. If they're, if they're flipping a profit greater than 20%, they're going to be suffering if they're not turning customers on a rate of about 40 to 50 an hour. So if we're not generating the market for them, they're not coming. I don't care what you waive, doesn't matter. I'm not going to put a food truck out there, it's a, it's a bad business decision.
Well, I can also add too, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure.
The, the permit, the permits themselves, and maybe this is just semantics, the permit fees themselves are not permitted to be revenue generating. They are to recoup the administrative costs incurred by your staff to review the paperwork. The other fee that we're not charging is the rent, and that can be a percentage of sales, or a flat fee, or what have you. And so we're not renting the space out, but the fee that we're talking about is not a revenue generating, and in fact, it's not permitted to be revenue generating, it's just to cover our costs. We set it at $250 because that's what other cities set it at, but we can also discuss, are we performing $250 worth of service to review the paperwork?
Probably not, yeah. Okay. Counsel, other questions, other thoughts, ideas on this? Again, I don't want to belabor this too much, it's a, it's something where we're trying to just, trying to get some more trucks in, so let's see what the best way to move forward is. I would like to take action tonight, to take some kind of action. I don't think we would, what would we buy, tabling it? Just, just putting it down the road.
Well, as, as long as the motion is clear and I understand what the direction is, I, I'm comfortable, this is not a complicated issue, if you all want to make the motion, I'm happy to make the change after the fact. If instead you'd like to see what it looks like, you can instead provide me with direction, and then you can table it, and I'll bring it back.
Yeah, I, I prefer we move forward with this, and I think, like you said, it's a simple, it's a very simple ordinance, so. What is the will of the council? We've talked a lot about this, what would you like to do? Starting down here, Mary?
Yes, I would like it to be decided tonight. Is that what you were asking?
Well, what, what steps would you like us to take?
Either, either way, the $250.
Do you have a preference?
I don't really have a preference.
Cindy?
I'd like to do the month-by-month, and, you know, another option we have is just to shut down the food truck court, you know, until things clear up. Nobody loses, nobody wins.
Okay, Charlie?
I like the month-by-month. I think that was probably as easy as any.
Okay, fair enough. Valerie? Mr. Farr?
Only thing I don't like about month-by-month is the collection. I just don't like the fact that staff is in a position then to have to collect over a period of time, and I'm not sure if the food truck drivers are going to be forthcoming and coming down here and saying, here's $25, then how do we enforce it? So my thinking is, is what Valerie suggested, is why don't we create a one-month period? Just a one-month period, where food trucks have a free-for-all, they can come down here and enjoy our, our food truck park for free, and if that works, then we stick with the $250, $250 permit as it stands today with no deferral? And if it doesn't work, we just do the deferral? Because I'm, I'm just telling you, until we create the venue, nobody's coming. It doesn't matter what we're talking about right now, I'm just, I just know, I would never invest in a food truck and send it to the south end of this park today. Wouldn't do it. Without a venue, I wouldn't do it.
Mr. Beasley?
I like the, the one-month, the one-month free-type deal. I think that's, that'll, we can call those 20 trucks back and tell them, hey, the month of September, the month of, the month of September, you guys can come for free, and just to see how that works, and then do the $250 if they choose to continue.
Okay, so instead of the, what the, the original item said was six months, we'll just change that to one month? That pretty much what I'm hearing? Everybody okay with that? That makes sense? Brent, is that, we could do that on the ordinance, no problem?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Well, how about then I will entertain a motion, if we can, somebody can state that properly?
Mayor, I have a motion that we take action on orders, so we can do it on a monthly basis, and then if we have to go to the yearly team.
That, that sounds, sounded different than what I heard.
Yeah, that's different where we talked about that.
The monthly basis, the monthly permit.
What about the, you want to do a month for free?
Yeah.
Okay, you didn't say that.
One month deferral.
You got to say that.
One month for free, and then they go on a monthly basis.
So that's still diff, is?
You're saying two different things. Let's just do, well, what I was thinking, what I just heard was, one month free, one month deferral, and then we come back and we revolve it after the month, and if they want to pay $250 a year after the month, it just goes forward. Is that, is that?
Okay.
Is that, is that clear enough?
It is, thank you.
Okay. Cindy second? Charlie second? All those in favor, raise your hand. opposed? Thank y'all. And thank you, thank you, Brent. Thank you, Gabe. Thank you, Keith. Appreciate you fighting through that one. All right, so, uh, number seven, at 6:39, we're in a budget workshop, 2020, 21, general fund and debt service fund. For that, Kim Quinn?
Mayor and city council, we've been talking about all the funds one by one, and here we are, now that we have certified values from Tarrant Appraisal District, we're going to talk about the general fund and the debt service fund. At the end of July, we received the 2020 estimated.
Kim, is your microphone on?
It is.
Okay. Get a little closer to your mouth, I can have trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me better now?
A little better. You speak pretty quietly, I know, but, and I hate to.
I'll, I'll try to speak louder. Tell me if I get too loud. I go fast and I go loud, that's not good. So the 2020 certified estimated values were received, they, and we came into, at about 2.2 million, 2.2 billion, excuse me, which is about 2.4% more than the estimated certified values that we received last September. So that's good. We were increasing. The estimated new value is 57 million, and that's split between 45 million residential and 12 million commercial. The value, taxable value of a single-family home increased as well. Our current, the 2019 value was 178,000, and 2020 is 188,000, about a, increase of about 6%. So we use the appraised values and calculate the tax rate. As we've talked about before, I think our very first workshop, we talked about changes that were made by the legislature and the comptroller on how tax rates are calculated. And so that's what these lists of the different tax rates are at the bottom of this screen. I also have the current rate, so the 2019 tax rate, that's the tax rate that our current budget is based on, which is the .459, 45.9 cents. And I have it split out between operations, that's the rate that funds the general fund, and debt, which is the, the rate that funds the debt service fund, what we pay our bonds off with. And then the proposed rate in the budgets that we're about to speak of is 45.7966 cents. And that's split out in operations and debt. Operations would be the .280625, debt would be .17731. And we'll talk about this more when we get to the debt fund, but it was the council's desire to keep, to be able to issue debt and keep the debt service rate the same, and here we, I couldn't get it exactly right on the money, but within four, 10 thousandths of a cent. So it's a little bit lower on the debt service side. We are required to post these rates that I have listed at the bottom on our website and a couple of other places that we'll discuss later on in the presentation, but I wanted to walk through them with you. The no new revenue tax rate is the top one, the .457966, again, which is what we have our proposed budget based on. This is what used to be called the effective tax rate. We, I calculated, just for your information, what the voter approval rate would be at 3.5, and that's the .468706. At, I think it was the last council meeting, or maybe the council meeting before that, you directed me to, due to our, the emergency declaration due to the health crisis, we were able to calculate our voter-approved tax rate at 8%. And so that's what that next number is, the .484903. So technically, when I post our voter-approved tax rate, it's going to be at the 8%, but I wanted to show you what the 3.5% would look like. And then the de minimis rate, we talked about that a little bit at our very first workshop as well. This is available to cities with a population of under 30,000, 30,000, and it's the rate that would enable a city to generate an additional $500,000 in revenues. So that's what the de minimis rate would be calculated at.
So let's be very clear, we're picking the top one. Those are, the other ones are just listing our options.
That's right. And, and, yes, and really, the de minimis rate is not even an option at this point. Due to issuing debt, we wouldn't be able to meet the timelines that are required. The thing about the de minimis rate is, it's an accelerated timeline. So if we were in any, in any year considering the de minimis rate, we would need to know that pretty early on in the budget process, because we would have to adopt it by middle of August.
Right, I understand, fair. So I, I know this is very confusing, I want to make sure everybody at home and here is, is clear on what this is. The important one is, is the top one, 2020 no new revenue tax rate, 457966. That is the tax rate we will levy for the budget year 2020, 2021. As you said, it's very slightly lower than what we're, what we've got right now. As, and that's why Kim put up top the 2019 versus 2020. So just to be clear, a lot of this stuff is per state law, 20 is confusing, they like to make it a little more complicated than it probably needs to be, but just so everybody understands, the tax rate that the council will propose for 2021 is 457966 valuation. So, just to make sure we're clear, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, Kim, but.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
That's okay. I'm happy to answer questions or have, hear comments as we go along.
Kim, could you, I, I didn't catch the first slide, could you give me the total, what was the total valuation? I didn't write it down.
Our total valuation is the, I, I said 2.2 billion, I rounded up. It's actually 2,198,509,226.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so that's just.
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt. Would you go back to that slide again? Patrick reminded me of something that I want to.
Sure.
Back one more, one more, the first slide.
The first slide?
Yes, please. So that tax rate up, the taxable value, 2.1 billion dollars, that's what we get from TAD. So your, what you pay in taxes is a combination of two factors. Your taxable value rate as determined by TAD, and then our tax rate, which is on the next slide. So you multiply those together to get how much your tax bill from the city is. So it's very complicated, but we control the tax rate, which is on the next page, but TAD controls this number right here. The Tarrant Appraisal District gives us the taxable value for the, the total plus each individual home. So that's how your tax rate is valued. I know it's complicated, so you multiply that, your tax, taxable value by this tax rate to get your tax bill from the city of Saginaw. So just so everybody's clear.
That's correct, and that's by design. I mean, you wouldn't want the same entity valuing your property and coming up with the tax rate.
Mm-hmm.
It's a checks and balances somewhat.
Thank you, Kim, sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
So can I point out one thing on the valuation?
Yes.
So our, our target valuation on our 10-year financial plan for this, this year, what we were supposed to be taxing on was 2.219. That's what we were supposed to be taxing on. And what Tarrant County has valued our property to be is 2.198. So we are undervalued at this point, based on what our target was supposed to be.
Yes.
So we're, we are in the hole this year, taxing-wise, starting out with evaluation. So I, I just want everybody to know that we, our tax values were not as high this year as we predicted.
That's correct.
Okay.
So let's take a look at the debt service fund. The debt service fund is where we collect our property tax revenue that is dedicated to pay off the debt of the city. So when we issue tax notes, bonds, certificates of obligation, this is the fund that we pay for them out of. I'm not going to go through line by line and, and talk about every number, I'm just going to go over generally, and then if you've got questions, I'll answer them. The, the point that I wanted to make in this slide and in this table is, on the column that's, the second from the right, the 1920 estimated value, you see that that is quite different from the adopted and the revised. So those changes there are a factor of the refunding that we did earlier in the year. So it's not necessarily changing the tax rate or anything, it's just showing, accounting-wise, we have to show the proceeds coming in, and then the proceeds coming out for the refunding. So that's why you see revenues instead of being the 3.8, the 6.792. But that's all I wanted to show you on that column. And then there's, I apologize, there's a typo on this slide. The last column should say 2021 and not 1920. But that is, that is based on issuing 20.5 million dollars in new debt. So we had to wait until we got our values to determine what we could afford debt-wise. Y'all authorized back in the spring, 8.5 million as interim, so you, you agreed that we would issue at least 8.5 million, you let us start using that, we were borrowing that from fund balance with the intent that we would issue bonds to repay that eight and a half million. And then there was also a desire, if possible, to fund a fire station, and we had to wait to see if that would be possible. to see if that would be possible based on our values. And it turns out, based on the values, that we could issue the 20 million, 500,000 in new debt, and those projects are listed. The Knowles Design, North Old Decatur Road Design, a million for sidewalks and ADA improvements, intersection improvement at W.J. Bowes in Old Decatur Road, and the signal upgrade at McElroy and Saginaw Boulevard. Part of that eight-and-a-half million was for design, and then we would be able to fund the construction as well, so that's what the 14750 is for the fire station. Now, as I mentioned before, we can do that within the existing debt service tax rate. In fact, it's just slightly lower. But I did want to point out that it's making assumptions, right? It's, as Mr. Farr clearly just stated, that, you know, we can't guarantee that for the next four or five years, we can guarantee that for next year and be reasonably assured that we will be able to continue that. I mean, we are assuming that we've got taxable growth of 2% per year, we are assuming that the interest rate on the bonds is 2.34%. We will know that by the next council meeting because we'll, we'll have received the bids for the certificates of obligation sale, so we'll know that. And then we also have a plan, in order to accomplish this, we'll be drawing down fund balance over the next four years in order to keep this tax rate at the same level. So I just want to make sure that that is clear to everyone, those assumptions. But the good news is, is that if you are willing to do this, we have the capability to do it. And we'll be able to do this because we've got in fiscal year 2324, just like in the current year, we have capacity where we're paying off old debt, which opens up capacity in our debt service fund. We've got another one coming in fiscal year 2324 where we see a decrease in our existing debt. Are there any questions on the debt service fund? Okay, let's move on to general fund then. Okay, just like with the debt service fund, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on the numbers, I'm going to go over a few key points, and then we'll get into the details on the next slides. If you would just look at the very bottom row on each column, the first column of numbers there is your adopted budget, the next column is the revised, so you'll notice that we went from a decrease in fund balance of 729,000 to 1.3. That was the result of when y'all approved the mid-year budget adjustments, right? So we were carrying forward projects from the previous year, and, and that drew down our fund balance. Our estimate of fund balance, and this is, this is the good news, so our estimated in 19, fiscal year 1920, our current fiscal year, instead of having to draw down the 1.3 million, we are expecting to be to the positive. And I'm going to go into those reasons here in the next slide, but that's good news. And then planning-wise, for next fiscal year, and again, we'll go into the details in the next slides, but we are planning on drawing down fund balance by 2.7 million. And those are for one-time big projects that we'll talk about here in just a minute. Okay, so let's talk about the current, current year estimates first. Property tax revenues are down slightly, and we talked about that, I believe, in the past when we're talking about the tax rate. It usually doesn't happen, usually our property taxes end up being slightly higher, and that's because TAD certifies our values, but the, but it's an estimate, it's not the actual value because there are still protests going on. And that is true, again, this year. In fact, normally, Tarrant Appraisal District certifies at 95%. This year, we're at 90% they've certified. So we've got a little bit more risk there, I guess you'd call it, because 10% of the tax roll is still undecided. It's either being disputed, or is incomplete, or they haven't finished their process that they go through. So it's possible that we could receive slightly less in property tax revenues depending on how the cases end up. They, I've said this before, they estimate that we will lose 30%, which is usually a very conservative estimate, but it's just an estimate. It could be more, it could be less. In our current year, due to the craziness that's gone on this year, we have, our fines and fees have been down, our rec fees have down, we've been closed or at reduced capacity, and then cable franchise fees are down, which has nothing to do with the pandemic, it's just the, the trend. On the good news, sales tax is up, we're up year-to-date 10%. Last, last month, we had a huge, huge bump, 20%. And we are estimating for the rest of this year that we will have, and it's a conservative estimate, that we will have, August and September collections will be the same as last, in 2019, last year's August and September. We're hoping for more, but just as a conservative estimate for the rest of the year, that's what I've, I've got. And for next year, I'm assuming a normal year, so what I'm assuming is the same as the current year without that big 20% bump that we had last month. I had mentioned that instead of being, drawing down fund balance in the current year, that we will be increasing fund balance by over $300,000, and that is due to the funding that we're getting through Tarrant County, which is the 1.23 million dollars. On the expense side, as you know, about 75% of our budget is personnel costs, and so when you've got to make reductions, it usually comes down to some sort of salary savings. We managed the hiring process and kept positions that we were able to keep open for a time open, and so we were able to achieve savings there. The other difference is that due to the delay in the Bailey-Boswell Overpass Project, we are not having to transfer the general fund balance that we had dedicated to that project until next fiscal year. So that's the current fiscal year. The next fiscal year, on the expense side, we've got full, we've got some roll-up costs. So if you recall, we added an emergency manager position, a firefighter, and a police officer, all for a partial year. We've got full-year funding, so we have to pay the full year for this in the next budget year, which is about $100,000 that were what I call roll-up costs. We also have a management analyst position in the building inspections area that was added, and that is offset by increases in permit fees. So there, we're increasing some residential permit fees, the majority of, and we'll have a list of those for you, but I didn't want to go into the detail now, by about $25, which is comparable to surrounding cities. And then the plant, the commercial and industrial planning, plan review fee is going up as well, to pay for the additional analyst. Melanie has done an excellent job this year in achieving savings in our insurance rates. We worked with, you all agreed, approved in agreement with a benefits consultant, and they were able with, with Melanie's help to get us some really great insurance rates. So we're going to see savings in that area next year. Added to the budget are very, very few things. We tried to keep a, we tried to keep current service levels and as, as tight as we could keep it. But we do have some one-time expenses. We anticipate that we'll use the 2.6 million from fund balance for the Bailey-Boswell Overpass Project. We have $150,000 in there in economic development for the, for Saginaw Boulevard redevelopment. We have the next phase of our ADA study, which is estimated to be $65,000. We have $32,000 budgeted for Parks Master Plan. There's a public works truck that really needs to be replaced, so we have $29,000 in there for that. And then one time, again, accreditation for public works, they're still working through that process. So all of, funding all of those things would bring us to the tax rate, the O and M side of the tax rate, the tax rate that goes to the general fund of the .280625, and then it's comparing to the current O and M tax rate.
Kim, before you go on, I have one, one thing I want to mention. I learned the other night at Mayor's Council that the district attorney of Tarrant County is spearheading a program called Mental Health Diversion Program. It's a new thing where they will take, and they're, they're following the template set up by Harris County, where folks, a police officer would not arrest a mentally ill person for a minor crime, but would take them to a mental health facility, check them in there, and put them in that system, as opposed to bringing them to the criminal justice system. They're just getting it started. Tarrant County has earmarked just over $2 million to kick this off. They're asking cities to contribute. I would like us to consider a mid-year revision to add some money for that. I don't have all the information now to present to council, I've asked for the information from the DA, so just something to keep that in mind. It would be, they're asking for a dollar per citizen, so for us, it'd be like $23,000. Relatively small, but I think it's a, it's a neat program, and I think it's a good way to manage our mental health issues in the community, but, so keep that in mind for mid-year. I think we'll come back with more information and look at that, so just, that's an FYI. And I'm strung that on, Kim, I'm sorry, Kim, I didn't give you heads up on that, but it's-
That's okay, I'm just making a note of that.
But I don't want a dollar right now, I want us to take a look at that mid-year, so.
Okay.
It's Mental Health Diversion Program. And I've asked the district attorney for a packet of information, once I get it, I will distribute it to everybody, so.
I was just curious what the status is on hiring the emergency manager.
We had the interview scheduled for last month, and we canceled them due to some things that were going on in Lakewood and our own city, but we're conducting panel interviews tomorrow. So we're interviewing four candidates, and hopefully we'll have a couple out of there that we'll move forward with, excuse me, with the fire chief interviews, and hopefully pick somebody from that.
And do you have a date you think maybe this person might start?
30 to 45 days, maybe less.
Yeah, I do. You know, it seems like we have an awful lot of parks master plans, park ideas and things that come through. Why are we spending another 32,000 on this particular item?
Mr. Mayor, and that's a good point. So our existing plan was conducted by the University of Texas Arlington. I think it's about six years old. You're lucky, y'all have a Parks expert sitting right next to you up there. In fact, he may have been involved with that. Master plans generally need to be updated about every five years. We have talked about bringing this to the Parks Board to see if they would be interested in sharing some of the costs with Parks Board money for a master plan update, but the simple answer is, it's just time. We have some opportunities, if you'll recall, whenever we, we pick back up potential future bond projects to update playgrounds, update existing parks. We've talked with the school district about acquiring some struck-off land, which would be part of a master plan in the future, so we're just on a master plan update schedule of approximately five years.
So the $30 million park proposal last year, was that not part of this master plan? And how much money did we invest into that?
It was not a master plan update. That was just a, kind of a takeoff list for, upon project planning. I think that some of that wouldn't need to be, you know, done again. Master plans generally have a, you know, a more public-facing element, so we would, with your approval, if we had a master plan update, we would probably send that to the Parks Board to be the, the process managers and have some public meetings to get feedback for what our future park system looks like.
So how much do we pay for these consultants to come in and propose these $30 million changes to us?
I guess I'm not clear, so what we're proposing is a plan update of 32,000? That would be the cost.
Right, but was, I think it was last year, we had somebody come in to the Parks Board and present a $30 million change to all the parks in the city? And you said that was not part of this master plan?
No, no.
Kate, I can elaborate if you'd like.
Sure.
So that was done as just a separate exercise as part of the bond projects to help for, apologies. So those concept plans were just done as a separate exercise to help provide or provide project costs for the bond projects. So what our plan was when we did those was, knowing that the Parks Master Plan was going to be upcoming, is that we're going to take those concept plans that we did and incorporate them into the Parks Master Plan. So we're not going to redo any of those, but we're going to surround those concepts with a little bit more of the language in the Trails Master Plan and try and link them together cohesively.
I think, Mr. Mayor, if I might add, one element that we've talked about but we haven't included in, in our planning documents is a, kind of a long-term vision for a trail network and connectivity. So you may recall, and our Parks Board, oh, I left out Councilmember Tucker, he's Parks Board alum, alumni as well. But we've got various trails and trailheads by dedication here, there, and everywhere. We don't have, at least on paper, a long-term plan to pull that together, to connect them, and, you know, make loop systems and that sort of thing. So the trail element would be a part of this, this scope.
Well, this is probably not the appropriate time to talk about it, but I know there were a lot of people that were unhappy with the concepts, a lot of the concepts that were presented, a lot of citizens that I've spoken with, so I just, I'd like to be able to have the citizen input before we start spending that kind of money.
That's the purpose of having a master plan. I mean, you have a master plan, it's a very public-facing process. Like I said, process-wise, I think the Parks Board would be kind of the captain, and as a recommending body, they recommend decisions to the city council. But a significant part of the scope would be having public meetings, focus groups, various things, to bring back long-term recommendations.
Any other questions?
And just, just to piggyback off of that, and just putting this in design evolution, you have to have, you have to start with a concept. And a concept doesn't necessarily flesh out as a plan, it's really just a bunch of ideas that are put on paper. I think it's extremely important that we memorialize our concepts that were generated through bond planning into a long-term plan, because some of those concepts, quite frankly, may be outdated even as of today. And going through that process, that very public-facing process, we will be able to, not only us, but also the Parks Board, will have opportunity to ferret through that conceptual design phase of our planning process. And I would say that, to the point of trailheads and so, there are parks in our city today that don't exist that can exist. Bana Box on McElroy, and where that trailhead would end is along a creekway and a waterway that goes all the way to Menton, and would terminate into a road that doesn't exist today. So I think without a master plan, we are overlooking a lot of opportunities, a lot of opportunities that none of us know exist. So I, I would like to continue forward with this conceptual idea that we came up for bond planning, flesh it out, put it into a master plan, and see what we've got to play with.
golf, did you have something?
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to mention, there's one other potential benefit for this master planning process, and that, this is a long time ago, but both Willow Creek Park and Highland Station Park were built with grant funds, matching grant funds from Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, but as a requirement to receive those funds, you had to have a current master plan. And back then, it was within the last five years you had to have one done. I don't know what the rules are today, but there, there is probably still some potential for grant funding from the state if we have a current master plan.
Okay, thank you. Kim?
Okay.
Proceed.
So the next slide is- So the next slide is, refers back to our tenure, our long-range master plan. Mr. Farr mentioned it last council meeting, I believe. And so I did this calculation to show where we stood as far, how we compared to the plan when we looked at the tax levy per capita. So based on the budget that was just presented, at the no new revenue tax rate, we would generate the over $10 million, and that is a tax levy per capita of $436.05, which is less than that in the game plan of $439.37 tax levy per capita. I also wanted to mention, in the proposed budget, there is no salary plan adjustments. There, we've discussed, due to the increase in fund balance with the CARES Act money, that, and depending on the situation as we go forward, that we could possibly fund a one-time payment. And if we were to do that next fiscal year, a three, and just looking at a 3%, those are the estimated costs for the general fund, about $265,000 enterprise fund, about, over, a little over $40,000, if that was the desire to do that. So the benefit of that is it's a one-time, you're not committing yourself to those ongoing costs.
And the question is, do we want to do that now, or do we want to look at that as a mid-year adjustment based on the, the current financial picture in six months?
Speaking as the Finance Director, I, you know, I'd like to see how our trends continue through the year and how we, we end up our year. I mean, we, I generally am pretty conservative in the estimates, but it's just an estimate. I mean, something wacky could happen, it's been happening, so.
No, it makes a lot of sense to wait and see where we are, and mid-year would be right around January, right?
Yeah.
January-ish, we'd take a look. When do we do mid-year adjustments?
Well, no, that's usually March, March, but we could certainly look at it, you know, after the fiscal year starts and we get a couple of months under our belt.
What does everybody else think about that? You want to do now, or you want to wait and just take a look and have a look-see and see where we are?
Yeah.
Everybody else, what does everybody else think? Just wait? Okay. Yeah, so we'll take a, we'll, we'll take a look at that first of the year and then consider that as a mid-year, potentially a mid-year, so.
Mr. Mayor, just want to mention one thing, and, and y'all are aware, we have a lot of employees that are retirement-eligible, so in my weekly updates, I, I try to, when Melanie gives us information, I'm honestly a little nervous about all the retirements because it, it's, we have good people, and it's even, it is very difficult to replace good people. So in light of our situation, no base salary plan adjustments this year, but we've got five vacancies, just off the top of my head, in, in Public Works right now. We anticipate a few more by the end of the year. And so I would just say that, you know, going forward, we need to commit to our, our salary plan adjustments and keep market competitive. We made some really good strides in the past year, especially on the entry level. So as a lot of our tenured folks retire, we had two this month in Public Works and, and one more. My preference is always, when we can, to promote from within, but ultimately, we have to go back out to the market and, and grab people. So it's important that we don't, you know, stray too far from what that, that plan recommends.
Thank you. Kim, go ahead.
Okay, so where do we go from here, our next steps? I don't know if y'all have received a card like this yet, but every, every property owner in, in Tarrant County will receive a card like this, and this is a part of the Senate Bill Two changes, so not only did they change terminology and how we're calculating the tax rate differently, but there are strides being made to be more transparent to our citizens, to the taxpayers, on what all of this means to them. And so what they're going to get, instead of on the blue sheet that you get in April-ish, it used to have the current tax rate and estimate what their tax bill would be, which was very distorted, because it was, it was your next year's values based on last year's tax rate. So this is the attempt to be more accurate in the estimate. So what this does is this directs you to a website that's being set up by Tarrant Appraisal District, but all of the taxing entities are required to post our data to that website so that when you go and you type in your account number for your property, you're going to be able to see all of the different taxing entities, what their proposed rates are. I think it also is going to list, it's going to list the no new revenue tax rate, it's going to list the voter-approved tax rate, and it's going to list the proposed tax rate, and it's also got history in there for each of the taxing entities. So I bring that up to, because we are going to be required by the end of the week to list our proposed tax rate. And normally, we would list the voter-approved tax rate, but in this case, we were, you all directed me to do it at the 8% to give you the flexibility. Again, we talked about we can't go up, but we could always come down. But my concern is that if we post as our proposed tax rate, the voter-approved tax rate, which is 8% over our, I want to say effective tax rate, but it's the no new revenue tax rate, then there may be a lot of concern. So I want some direction from you as to what you're thinking as far as what proposed tax rate do you want. If I put in the tax rate that's, we just talked about, which is the no new revenue tax rate, you need to keep in mind that we can't go up from there. We can, it doesn't have to be any of the ones listed, or we could kind of meet in the middle and do the 3.5% over the no new revenue tax rate.
You know, what would be the risk if we, let's say we put the, the 4.5, the, the no new revenue tax rate, what would be the risk? What new data are we going to get in the next month or six weeks that could change that?
There is no new data, it's just whatever council has ideas. If there's more things you wanted to add to the budget, or if some other issue comes up that you want to add, this would kind of, this would lock us, lock you in.
Okay. Well, Council, what, what do you feel? How comfortable are you with the, the no new revenue 4.457 tax rate? Mayor?
I'm comfortable with the no new revenue tax rate. We're not going to get any more data between now and the time you have to post it, so I, I see no reason why we shouldn't just go with this no new revenue tax rate.
Sandy, what do you think?
I'm thinking the 3.5%.
Okay. Charlie, what?
5.
5.5. Mayor Protan? You want? Mr. Farr?
Well, let me ask you a couple of questions about the total valuation, 2.198. I heard that this is 90%, not 95%, is that correct, of anticipated collections? 90, not 95?
No, it's 100%.
This is 100%.
It's the budgeted 100% collection rate. The 90% was that we have 10% of the total value of our properties that is still under consideration. So there is a case before the ARB, or it was just a property that hadn't got worked through the process yet.
Understood. I, I just wanted to make sure that the 2198 is the TAD-published 100% valuation as of the 25th of July.
That is correct.
Okay. That being said, what we are asking is $116,000 less revenue than what we said we needed in our tenure plan at the 457966 rate.
That's correct.
All right. So why are we not asking for plan?
We are trying to be as bare-bones with the budget as we could.
I, so I'm, I am fine with the rate-matching plan, which is $116,000 more revenue than what we collected on same-property taxes last year. That's our plan. That's what we all agreed to do in our tenure planning. It is, it is consistent with what we had, had communicated to staff, so I'm okay at least publishing that. I mean, that probably comes to a shock to everybody, but I think, at the end of the day, when we were raising our revenues at 8% per year for a number of years consecutively, and now we're talking about raising it, you know, 2.5 or 3%, we're way back in the range of where we, where we were planning to be to begin with. And since we've gone to staff, and we have said, "Staff, we're tired of seeing an 8% adjustment every year. Come up with a tenure plan that doesn't give us an 8% adjustment every year." They did. And now, now staff is asking for less than what the plan target was. So I, I love the idea that staff is proposing something less than what I'm willing to settle for, and it's admirable, I love that. But we committed to this plan, and we all sat together in a room and said, "Hey, Saginaw needs to be here in 10 years." And just like Valerie said earlier about deferring things for operations, and we would start out in the rear, I'm just saying, it's a very minor adjustment to the tax rate. It is indeed a lower tax rate, but I think we are not doing ourselves, the citizens, or this staff justice by diverting from our plan. Now, if you were asking for $100,000 more, this would be a completely different conversation, and I think we know that. But I'm just saying, I would support anything that would generate our planned revenue.
What percent is that planned revenue?
So it would probably be, I, I didn't run the math on it, but it would be probably a 4, maybe a 4.59.
That's, that's according to the plan. It would be to keep it at the 4.59.
Okay. So instead of 4.57, it would be a 4.59, holding us to plan. Now, Kim, I, I think that, that may be selling ourselves a little bit short, because remember that 4.59 is based upon a valuation of 2.2 and not 2.19.
All right, the, that, the rate would be the same as the plan, but you're correct, we're applying it to a lesser value.
So it's probably going to be 4, 4.61, or 4.605, whatever, somewhere in that range. So it's going to be between a 4.6, a 4.9 and a 4.6, somewhere in there.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Mr. Beasley?
I'd like, I'd like, excuse me, I'd like the, the, the plan rate, like Patrick.
All right, so I've got several different, you want to just, everyone want to just post it to 3.5, which would be, what, can you roll back to what the 3.5 would be, Kim? I'm sorry. To the very, there you go. 3.5 would be 4.68, and then we're talking, maybe we can go to 4.60 or-ish, or Kim can do the math. We don't have the math right here, Kim can do the math and see where we end up, and we can discuss that on our budget day, in a couple of weeks. Does that sound like a reasonable plan to everybody? We post this, we can go no higher than 4.68, then we come back on the budget day, our budget retreat, and we figure out exactly what the numbers, scrub them and see what the numbers will be, what magic Kim can work for us. Everybody okay with that?
So with, with the data that I know, I wouldn't support anything more than the 4.60-ish. I'm just, I'm just letting the group know, that gets us back to plan, a 4.68 is, would definitely be more than that.
No, I understand for, but what we're going, what we're going to post?
I, I understand.
Okay.
I just don't want it to appear as though I'm going backwards later if I ask to go down and somebody wants to hold high.
Well, I think we're all in agreement with you, but the 3.5 covers us so we can still go back down.
Understood. And something could happen between now and, I mean, something could happen. And I, I get that, I, I understand, so.
It's, well, and honest, y'all, we, we are just, and that's why you had a revised version, the comptroller is still changing the tax rate calculation, and so, and I don't have the final version of what our posting is supposed to even look like yet. So, I mean, it's changing day to day. I'm, I'm confident in the tax rate calculations now, I think that's accurate, but I don't have the final, what the posting's going to look like yet.
Okay. All right, so I think you, Kim, I think you've got direction. 3.5?
Yep, that's what I'll post.
We'll post that, and then we will discuss and finalize on budget day.
Okay.
Which is?
That's the next date there, which is a Saturday, August 15.
8:15.
As a scheduled budget retreat. I hope to get your binders out. Probably, my goal was originally Friday, but it's been a crazy couple of weeks, so it may be beginning of next week. But I'll try to get that out as soon as I can, so you can have a look at it before Saturday. The next council meeting, we had a really good bond rating agency call last week with Standard and Poor's. Tomorrow, we've got the due diligence call, and the next council meeting, we should see the results of the certificates of obligation and know what interest rate we'll get with that. And then September 15th, we'll be on schedule to do the public hearings and adopt the tax rate and a budget.
Sounds good. Thank you, Kim. Thanks for all your hard work, really appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, want to recognize, recognize Kim for her hard work with the ratings and, and put in the budget together, as well as all the directors, so if we were in a normal year, I, I'm pretty confident, based on the work that you've done with our long-range financial planning, and our adopted financial management policy statements, that we would be due for a ratings upgrade, which is very important. That means that, you know, as we fund projects in the future, they're cheaper to fund. It's a big deal. I, I expect, I hope I'm pleasantly surprised, may take the week off, but I expect our ratings will be affirmed, so, you know, ratings either upgrade, downgrade, or you stay the same.
What's our rating currently?
Double A minus, so our next, the next leg up, at least in S&amp;P's rating system, would be A-plus.
Double A plus.
Double A plus, sorry, yeah. Which, you know, in the next couple of weeks, we should have information. I, I just want to mention again, all our projections are very, very conservative. Our, our issuance projections are based on an interest rate of 2.34%, which is about .3%, .25% higher than what the market is right now. So we're, we're really happy. Also want to let anybody at home, maybe even Cory, if she's watching me, we're here to do a good thing as public servants and to deliver long-term value. Our situation is unique. The city's been well-managed for a long time. We're thankful to have stability in industries. You know, there's lots of cities that are not in as rosy a situation, so, and that's not by accident, I just want to mention that, and we're really excited for the future.
Excellent. All right, thank you, again, thank you, Kim, thank you, staff, for the hard work on this. All right, at 7:28, we're back in regular session. Item 8, executive session, is thankfully not required, so Item 9, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
All right, second, all in favor? At 7:28, we're out of here. Thank y'all. Everybody turn off your speaker.